And welcome back, and as you may know, this is the last of our lessons on Ephesians. I just want to alert you though that it's not the last class that we'll have. I'm going forward the next four weeks, I'll be bringing four different lessons on prayers, four different prayers, instructive prayers from the Old Testament. And I'll be sending everyone who's on my mailing list, the passages of Scripture and what the lesson is about. Thank you for being with us through this wonderful book of Ephesians. Let's have a word of prayer before we begin. "Thank you Father, and now instruct us by your Spirit, in your ways, that we may be yours in deed and in truth, in the name of Christ, amen." Ephesians, as you may recall, began with two very long, complex, lofty passages in the first chapter. They were just basically two sentences, but they began on a very high note. And we are ending, as you have noticed, with a long series of directives about practical affairs, a long series of commands about how to live as a Christian. And in that sense then Ephesians really exemplifies the nature of the Christian faith, which on the one hand can carry us up into the mystical beings of God our Father, and on the other hand, show us how to go about living our daily lives. The point is that a religion that never helps us to soar spiritually is not much of a religion. But neither is a religion that is of no earthly use. So in Ephesians, Paul has shown us that our faith is one that addresses both our transcendent needs and our practical needs. I recall seeing a bumper sticker once, and I don't remember the exact words, but it said something like this, "It's hard to soar with the eagles when you live with the turkeys." Which of course ignores one of the primary things we need to remember about turkeys, and that is at some point or other, we're all turkeys. We all have those incidents in our lives. We all have, there's somebody else that thinks you're a turkey, thinks I'm a turkey. In any case, one of the points that Ephesians makes is to address that whole notion by saying, "The good news is that you can do both." That is, you can soar spiritually while at the same time, you're at times being a turkey and at times you're living with turkeys. And you can do them both superbly well. Now, last time we talked about the armor that allows us to do both. Now we're going to see some final pieces of advice, and we're in chapter six and verses verse 18.[269.27][269.27]"And pray in the Spirit on all occasions with all kinds of prayers and requests. With this in mind, be alert and always keep on praying for all the saints." I don't know if you noticed or not, but when we talked about the armor last week, one of the interesting things is that in that long list of qualities that Paul mentioned, prayer was not one of the pieces of weaponry, spiritual weaponry, that he named. He does not say anything about prayer there. That does not minimize the importance of prayer, because at the end now, he's going on and picking up with the idea of prayer and of its place in the Christian life. And he says a number of important things about it here. First of all, he says to pray in the Spirit. Now, what exactly does that mean? Well, there are some people who think that basically he's saying to pray in tongues. And that could be, I suppose, one thing. But I think that rather, it means that we should let our prayers be inspired by and guided by and made effective by God's Spirit. And that's in accord with what Paul told the Romans in the eighth chapter in that really intriguing passage where he points out that the Spirit helps us when we try to pray. The Spirit comes to us in our weakness, and the Spirit utters with groans the kinds of things that we should be talking about with words, but we just simply don't express them. So the point is, it's not a matter of us praying in tongues, but of praying in the Spirit in a way that's beyond our present capacity. In other words, praying in the Spirit doesn't mean that you do it just as it's supposed to be done. That is, that this is the exact precise right way. It actually assumes that you don't know what you are to pray for, but that's okay. Because God's Spirit will be right there with us, praying as we should be praying. "So pray," he says, "even if your prayer is nothing more than Lord. I don't know how to pray, I don't know what to pray for, but all I know is I need help, and I need your help, and I ask you for it." I think that too long, too often, we get hung up on the idea that there's one right way, or at least one ideal way, to do every spiritual kind of act. Well, you know, that can keep you from even trying. I've known people, for example, who wouldn't pray for a particular situation simply because they didn't know what to pray for. Well, that's not an unusual thing, is it? I have people ask me to pray for them, and I pray for certain people, and I have to admit, I don't know what to pray for. I don't know exactly what to ask for this person. For example, supposing that you have a stressful job because of an oppressive boss. The question is, what do you pray for in that? Should I pray for my boss to get transformed? Should I pray for my boss to get transferred? Should I pray for my boss to die? What do we pray for in that kind of situation? The point is, we don't know always how or what to pray for as we pray. But the good news is that even while that's happening, the Spirit is right there, praying for us as we should have done it. So just do it, and as the song says, you know, "Do it your way." A Christian writer told about a time when his five-year-old daughter raised a question that made him realize how important it is for us to just try. Try to pray even though you don't feel very good at it or very apt at it. Try. He said his daughter, who's five years old now, I remember, was, and he got cross with her one day at bedtime, because he went into her room, and the room was just a shambles. And he said to her, "Trudy, why do you do this? Why do you leave your room like this? You know you're not supposed to do that. What's the matter with you? Why can't you be good?" And he said his daughter looked around a little bit, and then sadly said to him, "I don't know. I try. Doesn't it even count if you try?" And he said, "The question haunted him and reminded him of just what Jesus said, 'Blessed are they who do hunger and thirst after righteousness.'" Remember, not blessed are those who have achieved righteousness, but those who are trying to achieve it, those who hunger for it, those who thirst after it. So yes, it does count if you try. Don't be inhibited by the fear of not doing something precisely the right way. Because as I said, in most cases, there is no one, no single right way to do it. "So pray in the Spirit on all occasions, then with all kinds of prayers," as he says, "and requests." That word occasions, by the way, is the same word that we discussed in the fifth chapter, when we said making the most of every opportunity. It's the word chairos. Remember, the Greek has two words for time. One is kronos, which is clock time, and the other is chairos, which means the opportune time. And the word that he uses here is chairos, which means opportune time. That's another way of saying what he said to the Thessalonians, "to pray without ceasing, and with all kinds of prayers and requests." And realizing that as we pray, we are taking opportune time. We are responding to an opportunity. So he says, "Be alert, and in your praying, always be sure that you include your fellow Christians." Why be alert? Well, do you remember at Gethsemane, when Jesus went to pray alone, and he told his disciples to wait? He wanted to go be by himself, and that they should wait and watch and pray. And what did they do? They fell asleep. The word alert here reminds us of that, because it means to stay awake, to be sleepless, and even to have insomnia. So be watchful, be vigilant. Now exactly what does that mean? Well, the idea probably is to stay alert spiritually. That is, to not become so bogged down in the demands of everyday living, and in the light of all the things that are going on in the world, and all that's happening around you. Not to be so bogged down in that, that prayer gets pushed out of your life. Because prayer needs to be a central part of it. And part of what you pray for is your fellow Christians. And let's think about that. Think about, for example, in our church. Let's say we have a thousand members in this church. At any given point in time, how many of those need prayer? Well, my answer would be all. All thousand of them. We all need prayer. We all can be usefully prayed for at any time. Now, we have a prayer chain that does a good job of praying for those who are going through a time of crisis of some sort. But we don't have, and no large church that I know of has, a way to regularly pray for every single member of the church. But it's still true that every single member of the church would benefit from prayer and needs prayer. It underscores again the idea that we really need each other, and we're really responsible for each other's well-being. I read a account by a Lutheran pastor, told about an experience he had when he was relatively new at a particular church. He'd been there about six months, and had been working in the church, of course, and he had visited with a neighbor in the house next to his during that time. And they would talk over the fence, talk about gardening. And one day, the pastor decided he needed some bookshelves in his home. And he remembered that that neighbor said that he did some woodmaking, some cabinet making as a hobby. And so he went to the neighbor and asked if he would help him with the bookshelves. And the neighbor came over to the pastor's house, and the man noticed that on the coffee table, there was a magazine, The Lutheran. And the man said, "Oh, are you Lutheran?" The pastor said, "Sure." And he said, "Which church?" And the pastor said, "Grace." And he said, "Grace? You know, the one across from the courthouse." And the pastor said, "Yeah, I know. I'm your pastor." Well, both of them were embarrassed. Neither the church nor the community was so large that they would be unlikely to know each other. The point I'm trying to make though is this, if we're going to fulfill our calling as a church, we can't be strangers to each other. Now, of course, you can't know everybody in the church, but everyone should know someone, and know them well enough that they can bear each other's burdens, and pray for, and encourage, and build each other up. Well, Paul certainly acknowledged his own need for people to pray for him. Look at verses 19 and 20. "Pray also for me, that whenever I open my mouth, words may be given me, so that I will fearlessly make known the mystery of the gospel, for which I am an ambassador in chains. Pray that I may declare it fearlessly as I should." Well, it's interesting when he asks for prayer, and asks that, quote, "words be given me." When I first read those passages in Ephesians, I think, here's somebody who has a warehouse of words, and beautiful words at that. But just because something is beautiful doesn't mean that it's spiritually effective or powerful. And that's Paul's and ours fundamental concern. Not with saying exactly the right thing, or saying something the right way, so that it impresses the hearer, but saying that which will be used by God's Spirit to bring the hearer into the mysteries of the gospel. And note that twice, he tells him to pray that he might speak fearlessly. Again, is an interesting request, because you never get the impression that Paul is in the least bit hesitant to speak out about his faith. After all, he didn't quit after the first time he was beaten. He didn't quit after the first time he was in prison. So what's with this request, that he might be fearless? Well, I think that what we have here is a request that suggests that he at least had his moments when he lacked the boldness that he felt was necessary for an effective apostle. And that's understandable. We know from his own letters, the number of times, he was not only beaten and jailed, but hungry and cold, and run out of town, and despised. And at times, he had to stop and act and say, "Why am I doing this? Why do I keep going?" And after a while, you know, he would probably at times go to a new place, not only with the anticipation of bringing more people into the Kingdom of God, but also with the expectation that he would face some more hardship, or persecution, or both. Such things are still faced by Christians in some areas. Don't see that happening in our country. But I do see that we need to have boldness to be a Christian. It's quite likely that we have been in, or will be in, situations where we'll be tempted to downplay our faith. Norman Vincent Peale once told about meeting a man in an airport, talked with the man. Notice the man was reading a book. And he looked at it, and he noticed that it was one of the books that he had written, but there was no book jacket on it. So he just was curious, and he asked the man, "Well, why have you taken the book jacket off?" And the man looked a little bit embarrassed, and he said, "Well, I don't want people to know that I'm reading a religious book." He felt that if he were too openly religious, too openly Christian, that it could hurt him in his work. He was a salesman, and he was struggling as a salesman. And so he wanted to mute that idea that he was a Christian. Well, there can be all kinds of pressures on us in all kinds of situations to mute our faith. But boldness is what Paul suggests, and he asked for prayers for boldness. At the time, his need for boldness was particularly salient for him, because he was in chains in prison when he wrote this letter. And he uses a curious phrase. He talks about being an ambassador in chains. Now, we don't usually think about ambassadors in chains. It's possible that he used this phrase to point out the paradox of a chain, which could be a reference to the necklace worn by an ambassador to show the riches and the power, the dignity of the government that that ambassador represented. And so the paradox is, here's what an ambassador does, represents that kind, those kind of qualities of his nation. And Paul represents king of kings and lord of lords, and he has a chain too. But his, of course, is a prison chain. I could refer to the fact that ambassadors are not usually arrested and in prison, so that he was being treated illegally and wrongfully. And he could be acknowledging simply the irony of what he was trying to do and where he was. I like the way Peterson translates the verse. He says, "Pray that I'll know what to say, and have the courage to say it at the right time, telling the mystery to one and all, the message that I, jailbird preacher that I am, am responsible for getting out." So he calls himself a jailbird preacher. So having gone from these majestic descriptions of the mysteries of God, to urgent requests for prayer, for his continued and fearless preaching, he now prepares to close, and lets them know that someone else will fill them in with some more details. Verses 21 and 22. "Titus, the dear brother and faithful servant in the Lord, will tell you everything, so that you also may know how I am and what I am doing. I am sending him to you for this very purpose, that you may know how we are, and that he may encourage you." Well, Titus was one of Paul's coworkers. He accompanied Paul on Paul's visit to Jerusalem. He's mentioned in Titus, and Second Timothy, someone whom Paul sent out on missions. But how often have you ever heard a sermon or lesson on Titus? How often have you ever heard him held up as a model Christian, yet he's here? I think he's one of those neglected heroes of the faith. Just look at what Paul says about him here. In his relationship with other Christians, said he could be called a dear brother, not just a brother, but a dear brother. That means a very close friendship. And that goes once again to the idea of the challenge that we have, to create the kind of community or family with the church, where we have that sense of intimacy with at least some other people in that group. Secondly, in his relation to God, it says he was a faithful servant, recalls Jesus' parable, when he commended the people who had done well by calling them good and faithful servants. That's one of the best things anybody could hear. Even in the secular world, anyone who's been praised by someone whom they greatly respect or love, knows the value of hearing such words. It's like getting, you know, if you're a college student, getting a paperback from a professor that you really admire. And on it, he's written, "A, outstanding work." That sends your spirit soaring. Third, encouragement here. Paul says that Titus is going to encourage you. Encouragement is one of the gifts of the Spirit. Apparently, Titus had this gift, and Paul was confident that he would exercise it with the Ephesians. So here was a man who used the gifts that God had given him to serve his Lord. And I have to tell you, encouragement is no minor gift. And I would not even limit it to spiritual encouragement. We all need encouragement for various kinds of endeavors in our lives. Remember, when I was on the faculty at Southern Illinois University, I was asked by a publisher to write a textbook on social problems. So I agreed to do that, wrote a couple of sample chapters, sent them in. After a while, got back the response from a number of people who had reviewed it. Some had some good things to say, but there were a couple of them that were just absolutely devastating, nasty. Like they tell me, you know, "Throw this all away and start over. It's no good at all." I mean, I was literally devastated by that response. But you know what? The interesting thing is, the editor with whom I was working still encouraged me. He said, "I think you have something to offer. I think you have something good, so let's keep at it." Well, eventually, Jeanette joined me in this, and it turns out that that book is now in the 14th edition. It's been used for over 40 years in colleges and universities. But it would not have ever been published if it had not been by the encouragement of that editor. So here you have a portrait of a Christian who's a real blessing to his world, who relates well and intimately with fellow Christians, who's faithful in his servant to the Lord, and who uses his gifts to minister. And so Paul gives the benediction in verses 23 and 24. "Peace to the brothers, and love with faith from God the Father and the Lord Jesus Christ; grace to all who love our Lord Jesus Christ with an undying love." Paul began this letter with grace and peace, as he does all of his letters, and he ends by asking again for peace and grace, as well as love and faith for all believers. Excuse me. The Greek literally says, "grace to all those living our Lord Jesus Christ in immortality." And that probably is a reference to the fact that those who love Jesus have eternal life. Love is the linkage, the bond that makes us one with Him now and forever. He loved us with an everlasting love. "Nothing," said Paul to the Romans, "can, and nothing in all creation, can separate us from that love. And our love for Him is immortal, undying. And it's in the intersection of our love for God and God's love for us that keeps us anchored to everlasting peace and grace." I often, when I was in the university, had students do a, called a "who am I?" test, a simple test, in which you ask them to take a sheet of paper, write down one to 20 on one side, and then 20 answers to the question, "Who am I?" And usually, and you can tell some interesting things about people from the way they respond. But usually, they begin with things like, "Well, I am an aunt, I am a student," you know, various kinds of roles that they play in life. Well, one young woman, after saying a number of things about herself, wrote this, quote, "I am a farmer member of a very beautiful, happy, intimate human relationship, which has made me all of the above. Now I wish I were still part of that relationship, for it meant very much to me. I am afraid." Well, human relationships are fragile, and when something disrupts them, we're often left just as she was, yearning and afraid. But God's love is everlasting, and when our love joins God's love for us, then grace and peace will abound. There's an old hymn called "My Anchor Holds" that expresses this. Here's some of the words. "Troubles almost dwell the soul; griefs like billows o'er me roll. Tempers seek to lure astray; storms obscure the light of day. But in Christ I can be bold; I have an anchor that shall hold." And he closes at him with these words, "By His grace I shall not fail, for My anchor holds, My anchor holds." That surely is the message of Ephesians to us each. Your anchor will hold. You will live in the amazing grace of God. You will live in the amazing grace of God and you will have peace. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.